If you would all please stand and join me saying I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, the next item is approve the agenda. You have the agenda in front of you. Do you have any changes or modifications?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented with the addition of under number three on the meeting schedule to add the acceptance of the two thousand and fifteen sixteen municipal budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Next approval of minutes of the regular state of commission meeting and the special meeting on the mart- Tuesday, March seventeenth.
Motion to approve both the special meeting minutes and the regular minutes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, the next item is communications. I do not believe we have any communications this this time, okay? Public participation, an opportunity to speak about something that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. We have a couple proclamations that we'd like to make. Uh, one is to to um make the week of uh, oh, make April twenty-second as Earth Day and April twenty-fourth as Arbor Day. And I would propose this, that addition, and I would like to point out, it's not, I don't think it's in here, but on uh, the nineteenth of April, there is available to anybody who wants to go as a Sacra tour. We've all heard about Sacra and what they do for us. There are tours available to go up and see what happens to your recyclings when you when you send them up. It's a, it's a great idea. I think so. Okay, so, uh, we will declare um, April twenty-second as Earth Day and April twenty-fourth as Arbor Day in Huntington Woods. And the second proclamation is proclaiming the month of May as Mental Health Month in the city of Huntington Woods. And Commissioner White, would you have to, like to add anything to that?
Well, it's also Nursing Week, the first week in May, can we add that or no?
Oh, that is a-
Yeah, yeah. We usually put it on there. I forgot to mention it to City Manager.
I can add it to the next meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, well, that's-
I think that's, we're doing a talk about the next meeting.
Well, Mental Health Month-
But I think it's really important that both of those, Earth Day and Mental Health Month. I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. The next item is ordinance five seventy-five. Amy, you want to help us with this, please?
Sure. Oh, go ahead. Or I can just comment on this. This again is another House keeping, keeping item based on the change in the state statute. And unfortunately, this is my era. I missed this in, when we did the first go around in the amendment, so this is just, so now the entire section will be amended to be consistent with the changes in the state statute.
Yeah, this as far as the filing, filing time for petitions, yes.
Fifteen versus twelve.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the-
Approved.
So, change in ordinance five, five seventy-five, okay. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. The next item is matter of consideration of the support of the short and mid-range plans, solutions proposed at the uh, charrette, and well, it, we heard about them at the charrette they had, about some of the changes of I six ninety-six and Woodward. Even though really Huntington Woods is not necessarily included in that intersection. It's not in Huntington Woods. It's in Royal Oak and Pleasant Ridge, but the zoo is there, but they included us in it. We're good to go to them and look at some of the changes that they are planning and modifications to make. And the, the first, the thing I think, the first thing to do is to consider that there are proposals to make changes in the width of the road, the sidewalk locations and things of that nature, but they would do them in a temporary manner first. Paint them on the street, paint something green or red or what. And, and let the people answer whether or not that's the way to do it. I think it's, I think it's a good idea. And they, they've got some things that represent some pretty significant changes, but these are all long range. This is, they told us it may be twenty-five or thirty years before all of these things are, are actually put into place, if they're ever put into place. One thing that they talk about is the accessibility to the zoo from Royal Oak. And I think one of these, you know, charts here on number four, is they, they would, they would change that. That's how, you know how Washington Avenue comes into, into uh, six ninety-six service drive and crosses over and goes underneath the parking structure, but it's one-way. And they would suggest as part of the overall plan, make that two-way. And dramatically increase the size of the walkways so that they are safer. So, that's just one of the, one of the many things that they're doing and, and the right turns coming up and they, they were, I would suspect rather optimistic in their thinking, saying that what you really need to do is to get rid of the underpass. And I think they recognize that MDOT probably wouldn't even think about that until someday when it needs to be rebuilt anyway. And even if it would be, but they had some interesting thoughts and ideas of how you might do that. So, to me, it's good to see this being considered. So, but it's, but it is very preliminary and just to, just to look at. Did you, did you have enough opportunity to read the resolution? Does anyone have any comments about that?
I just done, uh, I talked to City Manager, um, Amy and I was, I wanted just her to ask Carol just about what you were just talking about, the Washington thing, 'cause that is, I just want to make sure that, you know, I know that we did pay into this study, so we're part of the study because even though it's not in our, it's in our backyard, but it, what they do will affect traffic flow, which eventually affects us. Because if, if you go past that area on a Saturday or a Sunday, that's a gorgeous day, you know that you have a bottleneck by the zoo. So, or if you're there at the end of the year, like May, if we're on a good day and schools are there, you can't, you know, it's, it's a backup. So, the only thing is the Washington one and um, City Manager sent me a colored copy, which actually I could visualize a lot easier, the colored copy, so I don't, I don't have an issue. I just want to make sure that we're giving our blessing to go ahead with the a study and not stamp this as midterm, the Washington two-way. You know, 'cause everything else is, you could just repaint it and re, you know, move away the barrels, move away everything. If you, if they do a two-way, I don't know how, if they can do that and change that back. I don't know the state do within that. And that's a question that'll come at that next meeting. So, I guess I, I would approve it. I just want to make sure that we're not saying that Royal Oak's plan, that we're approving their two-way on Washington when we haven't even seen any study, planning, hasn't looked at it. Yeah, and I, you know, I think this is a work in progress. Okay.
It is, and it is a long timeframe. That's the main-
Correct.
There'll be plenty of opportunities to input.
Okay, thank you.
And there are questions whether MDOT-
That's-
-will ever go along with it, and that's why everything is going to be marked, but not marked in stone, but marked painted and in some instances will have barrels.
Right, I'm aware of that. But the Washington thing is, Washington Street is a little different than barrels and hay, hay barrels and that. So, I just wanted to ensure that we weren't-
But, but again, this would be as proposed, if it's, if it is deemed to be successful or be used, it would be put in concrete. You're not going to put barrels and do, to do that. I don't think they would do that.
No.
But that's-
You have to widen the streets. I mean, you have to widen the walkways.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's widening sidewalks and all that stuff.
It says that on a lot of it, but then it comes down to that and it just seems more permanent. I just wanted to make sure we weren't-
I think, I, I think you're safe. I really do.
If legal says we're safe, we're safe.
Okay, is there a motion to-
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion- Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to support um, the short and mid-range solutions proposed by the I six ninety-six Woodward Walkability Charrette and encourage MDOT to review uh, the proposed uh, changes.
Okay, is there a, okay. Now, any discussion here?
I'm sorry, I had it before.
Yeah, you did, okay, but that's okay. Yes, Mr. Zeno, your name and address?
Yes, yes, I know the drill.
Okay.
Kenzino eighty-six thirty-four Huntington. Um, the only, the points are all well-taken, and I understand the Commissioner's positions here. The only point I'm trying to bring out is, over the last year, I've been dealing with a series of documents that are unreadable. And this is the best we can do as posted on our website. Uh, we're dealing with outside organizations. We're dealing with historic commission maps where you can't read the addresses on. Surely, we can go and post higher resolution photos on our website. I asked you to consider this, but I do support a study on this, although it's not trivial. If you know that street, changing that direction and that half-blocked by L.A. Fitness is going to be quite a challenge.
Certainly, that's why it's not one of the very first things they're going to try. It will be, it will be down the road always. And you have to remember, what we are, we're putting on our website materials that we are given. Okay, this came from there. We didn't create them.
You can go back to the people with the materials and say, no, because they have much higher resolution graphics, in my experience.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
John Lieberman thirteen one sixty Talbot, in my twentieth year here. I understand your comments about this being experimental, using temporary means to figure this out, and it says in here, to use their language. These improvements are intended to be experimental. If they don't work, they can be removed. Upon implementation, results may be observed and measured in real time. Do we know what that means? How are they going to measure them? Are there criteria? Do they know what meet, what level they need to reach for them to say, oh, this works? Or what level means it didn't work? To put a test in place when you don't know how to measure success ahead of time, I think is looking for problems.
We can count cars, we can count accidents, we can count things that happen.
Right.
We can count traffic flow. That can be done. That's not our job. That's, that's the highway department, the people doing it. So, we have to, you know, I'm sure there will have, they will have more than enough information in order to make decisions.
And the question that Mary raised is a real one, is when the weather is warm and when kids are going to school, is it feasible at all to do some of this? They squeeze up that intersection. What's the impact on the crossings there as it relates to uh, the bridge going to Main Street? At some point, they envision going wider on that bridge and actually having stores or businesses on both sides of the bridge. So, this is a work in progress. I can assure most of the people sitting here that it, in many instances, if it is ever achieved, will be way after all of us have left. And one of the problems is the cost. At this point in time, they're going to stripe and barrel. Because as I, I worked for MDOT for a number of years. MDOT is resistant to this kind of work. So, what you will get is traffic speeds. They do hope over time to change Woodward. So, it is not a bypass road that completely bypasses Huntington Woods. If you look at the most recent master plan, there are concepts in there for mixed use, having shops available that we can shop at. They want to narrow Woodward in general. So, I mean, uh, all this is, is one intersection, um, and the real push is coming from Royal Oak. It has-
And Pleasant Ridge. I think more, more Pleasant Ridge is about all.
Pleasant Ridge wants a number of changes that are not occurring in this. For example, the city of Pleasant Ridge, the majority of people cannot cross Woodward. One, you have an underpass that makes it completely impossible. And depending on how they work that road, uh, they at this point in time have no stops for the, the BRT planned for their city, which is utterly absurd. But what you will see is measuring, which has been done standardly for years throughout the region. It will be done by MDOT. It's federally required. You can call SEMCOG and ask, how do they do traffic studies? And you can call the, the regional office, which is over at Nine Mile and the John Lodge of MDOT, and ask them how they intend to do measurement.
Well, do you know, do they measure pedestrian traffic?
They measure everything, actually. They, they do.
Pedestrians too?
Yeah, actually, at the, at the last meeting, and- When's the next meeting? Uh, isn't it the-
For the charrette?
Yeah, for the charrette.
May fourteenth or sixteenth?
Yeah, you should, and we'll have it posted, but it's probably one of like twenty meetings that is going to happen. But it was actually very informative, and I asked them, what empiric data are they using? Because they were using traffic patterns actually from one time where we had a little, a recession in Detroit. So, I'm like, is that accurate? And they said that what they're going to relook at the data, but they're very precise in what they do. And they had three experts from around, um, it, pretty impressive from, that did like the Brooklyn underpass. I mean, they did some really amazing innovative things and very, very detailed as far as counting cars, counting pedestrians, looking at traffic. So, I think that you would really appreciate going to that next meeting and becoming involved in it because it's, it is very interesting. And between that, the EBT, the BRAT, and the M one, we've got a lot of changes that are coming, how to get this all together. And you, probably Commissioner Jenks is right, twenty years might be, might, you know, the M one's happening now, but to get it all, all interfacing and talking-
The BRT, Mary. M one stops at the Boulevard.
It'll be, it all, it all connects together. So, anyway, I think that going to that meeting, we'll make sure that we post it, is very, and it's usually at the Ford Center at the, um, at the zoo. So, it's, yeah.
That's where the last one is being, I don't know if the next-
But we know, we'll, we'll post that.
We don't know where it's going to be. We'll have to find out.
But if you're interested, they like ideas. They like questions.
And they like questions. You may not get-
They like questions?
They do.
Yeah, yeah, because the only way you get a solution is being asked a question that no one thought about. So, I mean, that's constructive.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is on the floor to approve changes, and motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Now then, uh, we, I, I would just take a moment here, I, I, I'll let you know that our state representative is enjoining us tonight. Would you like to make a comment about anything or, I mean, let's see, uh, won't be too long, will it?
Sure, I just, I was just kind of stopping by to check in, see how things are going here, uh, and say hello to everyone. Not, not a lot of updates to, to give. Uh, this last month, March was reading month, so I got a chance to-
Does he have a name and address?
Oh, sorry, Robert Whittenburg. Uh, I live in Oak Park on Harden Street. Uh, and, and represent this community as the state representative, so I appreciate you letting me be here. So, March was reading month and got to read here at Burton, uh, which was a lot of fun. Actually, Mrs. Crable, who is the principal there, was my fifth grade teacher at Burton, so it was pretty cool to be there. Um, read to a few different classes there. Uh, also went and dropped off some information. The third graders came to Lansing, uh, as the third or fourth grade. I don't remember the specific grade, but they came to Lansing and I gave them uh, some information, some bookmarks, some booklets to kind of read through. Uh, so it was really cool. Ended up reading to, um, so in the twenty-seventh district, there's four different school districts, so the Berkeley, Oak Park, Ferndale, and Hazel Park. And read to over, uh, it was seven hundred and fifty-five students, so, which was really, really nice. And a lot of great questions. Uh, they kept me on my toes with the questions they were asking. Uh, it was really good. Also had coffee hours every month. Again, there's seven different cities, uh, that encompass the twenty-seventh house district. So, trying to rotate and do two, at least two every month. Um, so we will be here in Huntington Woods. Hopefully, if not this month, then next month for sure. Um, we will keep you posted. I'll let you know. But for those of you here and those at home, I just want to encourage you to go on my website and you can sign up and get email updates. Not very often. We're not going to spam you, I promise you that. We'll send you whenever there's legislative updates or things going on in the community. Uh, the website is wittenberg dot house dems dot com. And then also I'll give you my email. Um, you can just email me and we can sign you up as well to make sure you're getting the update. So, it's robertwittenberg, which is W I T T E N B E R G at house dot M I dot gov. And if there's questions about anything, suggestions, concerns, please reach out to me. Please always feel free to reach out to me. And again, also want to remind people that there's an election coming up May fifth, uh, and there is a ballot proposal. And if people have questions, uh, please reach out to me as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that anyone has. But more than anything, just want to make sure everyone gets out to vote, tells their family, their friends, everyone to get out to vote. It's very important. So, that's really it. Thank you for, for letting me be here this evening.
Thank you.
And again, please reach out to me. And that's open to all of you as well. If you need anything, I know we're, we're in contact. But please always feel free to reach out. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it. Okay, the next item then is the commission meeting schedule. We're going to receive our budget. And first of all, but let's take care of the, the May, the May fifth meeting, we will cancel, correct? Because that is an election. This room is full, so, uh, we can't do that. And then we need to reschedule that meeting or a similar to meeting. What do we have in the proposals?
Tony and I were suggesting that you set another meeting and it be a budget study session at that time.
Okay, now we have the meeting on the nineteenth, obviously isn't, that, that will be a regular meeting, so.
Uh, the meeting on the nineteenth, per the charter, the budget needs to be adopted, so any meeting that we have-
There should be a meeting-
As far as a public hearing or review of the budget would have to happen prior to that date.
Well, let's see, we're looking at May. Does anyone have any thoughts or ideas as to what would be a good time?
Typically, we've used the month of April to have these sorts of meetings.
Okay.
And the budget usually was adopted early May, but since we're not having the early May meeting-
We have, we have a regularly scheduled meeting on the twenty-first of April. Would you, would be, we've got, we get the budget tonight. We've got time to review it a bit and look at it and come back and then have the, the study session on it. You want to shoot for Tuesday night, the, the fourteenth? That, how does that sit with everybody's schedule?
That's, that's a week from today.
That's a week from today.
I'm not available.
You're not?
Go to the twenty.
How about you? How, well, how about the, well, the next Tuesday, Tuesday nights, I pick those because those tend to be-
Right, that, I think.
Regular, how about the April twenty-eighth?
Can we start early on the twenty-first and, and have a study session prior to the seven o'clock meeting?
The, we're having interviews for vacancies at six-thirty-
That's pretty quite sad.
On the twenty-first.
How about then, how about the twenty-eighth?
Uh, I'm out of town. Oh, and after the meeting on the twenty-first, can we start?
Well, just make the budget study session part of the regular commission agenda and make that a-
You could do that. It's up to the city commissioner.
Item, and we'll just hold it off to the end.
Can we move on?
How many interviews do we have?
Three.
Three, three, I believe, yes.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's try that to at least start the meeting and see, see how far, that's a big document, you know.
Can we have an afternoon study? Can you want to maybe start at four-thirty on that day and maybe, or five, four-thirty, and then go to the interviews and then have our meeting? That way, we're not going after the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that, that'll work for me. Does that work for you?
Jill, you know?
I can't tell you that right now. I'll say yes. If it doesn't, I'll let you know.
All right, so set the budget study session for four-thirty on April the twenty-first, followed by the interviews at six-thirty, followed by the regular meeting at seven-thirty. Okay?
Yeah.
Wow.
So long. Action packed.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to uh, set those times that City Manager just said and canceled. The regularly scheduled commission meeting of May fifth.
Second.
Okay, so that I would encourage all of you to look over the document. If you have questions, the best, the best thing I've found, the way to do it is to write notes to Tony and sit down and meet with him during the day sometime or whatever.
You have any questions, just write them, write them down and email them to me and I'll get back with you. That's the best way to do it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. I didn't ask for nade, but I didn't think I heard any, so. Okay.
Do we need a motion to accept the presentation of the budget or just note it?
No.
No?
We're not accepting it, we're receiving it.
We're receiving it, yeah, we're receiving it. The budget stands received.
There you go. It's all yours.
Okay. Next item is to, we have an executive session that is scheduled to occur right after the close of this commission meeting to discuss a, a letter which is subject to attorney private privilege. This is our attorney has requested this, so is there a motion to set the meeting?
So moved. Second port.
Public comment?
Yes.
Kenzino eighty-six thirty-four Huntington. Um, without violating attorney-client privilege, can you let the citizens know the nature of this meeting? Is it material in any way to the business of Huntington Woods?
I can't tell you what the meeting is about because it's subject to the attorney-client privilege, okay? I'm the attorney for the city of Huntington Woods, so obviously it's relevant to Huntington Woods. And that's all I'm going to say.
At what point will we become-
Will the information become available then?
The information in, in a closed session is never available. Okay?
No, it's not, but thank you.
That's the way it works.
Okay, we have a, a motion to go into executive session with, requires a roll call vote. So, Commissioner White?
Yep. Aye.
Aye, aye. Let it be recorded as unanimous vote. Okay, uh, the next item is a postal letter to go to the residents regarding the status, status of historic edition, a potential historic district discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll deal with that point. I feel that residents of the city are entitled to hear from us directly on the issue of what exactly we are doing with the issue of the expansion, if at all, of the historic district. I've spoken to enough people since this matter has been discussed here, and I'm convinced that there are a number of questions out there and a number of, uh, now, I'm calling preconceived notions, but notions that were way ahead of where we're actually at. And at the last meeting, the motion was made to have a informational meeting with the residents of the city at a date time to be determined. And that would be done before anything further was done by us with regard to addressing this issue. There are obviously strong opinions on both sides of the issue. And a lot of those strong opinions on both sides of the issue are, some are subject to fact and information. Some are subject to concern, but whatever they are, they are the concerns of our residents. And so I am moving that we send out a letter citywide, a letter that's attached. And the letter, I believe, uh, be, the only two amendments to the letter will be a reference to where the master plan, which is referenced in the letter, can be found on the city's website, so people can see it if they want. And then I also move or suggested, I'm moving now that we- And then I also move or suggested, I'm moving now that we add that the meeting will be scheduled at a date and time to be determined because we haven't done that yet. We have to figure out where we're going to have it, you know, and what the, what the format would be and so forth. But the goal at this point of the letter is to merely advise the residents of the city that we are at best gathering information at this point in time and nothing more than that. And again, I say that based upon conversations, many of which occurred at the Mensbach auction on March twenty eighth. And many questions were online, what are you doing? And the answer was, we're not doing anything, we're gathering information, we're trying to respond to the concerns of residents on both sides of the issue. So I realize we can get away with posting the letter on the website, I realize we can probably get away with some social media. But believe it or not, even at this time, there are people that don't have computers or don't use email on a regular basis. And so to do it the old-fashioned way, I think it's important that we mail the letter out citywide. So I move that we send the letter out as soon as possible and post it to the city's website as soon as possible and social media as determined by the city manager.
Okay. Good. Yep.
And I, my feelings is that I agree, there is misinformation, there's always been misinformation, we do have social media, there are ways to send things out. I don't agree we should pay twelve hundred dollars to send out this information because, well, first of all, there were some errors in it, we did correct those. And the second thing is, I talked to city manager Sullivan and I said that I can't see us sending out an update on the information we've had since the last commission meeting to figure out a time and a place and a date to have our information meeting and not have the date of the information meeting to, for our residents to send out the letter because that is very important. So if we're going to send out a letter, don't talk about how we're going to have this meeting and think that we can't all get together, put our heads on and figure out a date when to have the meeting. Because it seems to me a little foolish to send out a letter talking about the historic district. And then, well, we didn't get around to getting the date to the information meeting because, so we're going to pay twelve hundred dollars and not have the date of that meeting in this letter, which I think is important. And, and there were some other things that are now fixed in it. So I don't think the letter, I'm not, I just don't think it's, it's not on my high priority list. I know there is always going to be some confusion in what is going on here and I, I, I don't agree with sending out the letter.
Okay, any other comments, could you ask for drinks?
Yeah, I move to amend so that before the letter is sent out, it shows a date, time and location, if that's considered acceptable.
Well, I guess it depends on our city manager's ability to come up with that.
We have got two potential dates that the recreation center is available in May and we are looking into bringing in outside speakers that can deal with it. So we need to coordinate their schedules and the rec schedules and so there's a little bit of logistics involved in it. I also, I do, I have voices concerned before, if you, if you indicate in this letter and you mail it out to two thousand four hundred households, you know, we just don't have room for that. The original idea was to have informational meeting and target the individuals that were in the, in the proposed area to be studied for the historic district. Making the information available, but specifically targeting those people that have the most vested interest and make sure that we had room to accommodate them. So I have no idea what kind of attendance we would get if, again, we invite six thousand people to a meeting.
But the flip side to that is, it is a citywide issue.
Yeah.
It affects the city as a whole. And I ju, you know, I just feel like I said in view of everything that we've heard the last several weeks, that it's important to address the issue and communicate with our residents. And like I said, if I thought it was possible to do it just using social media and so forth at no cost, fine, but that's not possible. And there are many residents, as I said, that don't have computers, albeit probably not many, and many who don't use email. And I feel it's important enough based upon the conversations we've had with, like I said, people who have strong opinions on both sides of the issue, that we simply say we're not doing anything until we've had this informational meeting. If you're able to pick a specific date, you know, within the next week or so, that you think you can do this, fine. But I wouldn't want it to drag out for an unreasonably long period of time. And I would also point out that we are responding to that, Ms. Iverson acknowledged that the last meeting she handed out a letter to a number of households, I don't know how many, and that's fine. So, but that's her view of what the issue is, so I don't know how many households got that. And that's absolutely everyone's right to, under the First Amendment, to pass out information, that's fine. But as, the, the letter that was passed out is of the nature of what we're doing. And I think as the city commission, we should tell people what we're doing and not have it be analyzed or filtered by other folks. And, and again, there's no, certainly nothing nefarious about giving a letter to people, that's great. But on the other hand, where the letter is tied about what we're doing, I prefer that we tell the residents of the city what we're doing. And I think this issue is important enough, it should go to every household. I think whether we have a specific date at this point doesn't matter, what matters is we're communicating that right now we're not doing anything until we've had this informational meeting. Once we lock that date in and have it, you're going to have to broadcast that anyhow and make that information available anyhow to people no matter what. So if you're able to get that and accomplish that promptly, great. If that's something that's going to require months of planning, not great. So I guess it depends on what you think, is it something you can do relatively soon? If the answer is yes, then I'll accept Commissioner Jenks's proposal.
Well, we are working on it, so I think we can get on it relatively soon. Again, I just want to caution you, we cannot accommodate more than, you know, about what twice as many chairs are in this room. But we
Oh, at the rec, at the rec center.
At the rec center?
At the rec center, well.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's what we're talking about, having it, right? At the rec center?
Yes.
Okay, and you said there's only a couple of dates now that work?
Yes.
Okay, well then, when do you think we would be able to?
Why don't, I would suggest, why don't we set the date at the next commission meeting? That's, that's two weeks from tonight. Is that enough time?
No.
Do you think, what do you think, do you think that's adequate?
Yeah.
As long as, you need time to do the job right, so.
That's fine, no problem.
Why, instead of saying set the date, why don't we see if it's feasible to set the date two weeks from tonight? Because we might find that there is more work that needs to be done in order to, to make a, a proper presentation to the community.
Right.
And to have the right people there to inform us. I don't want you to suggest to set a date for the, just to set a date.
Alright, so we'll put this back on the agenda then in two weeks.
You know, move to table.
Would this be a time that I?
And I, I can't move to table my motion, I guess.
No.
So, Mr. White or one of my colleagues here.
You can move to withdraw.
Well, I want to move to withdraw and I'd like to prefer that it just be tabled.
Tabled until the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table it, just the motion on the table.
Until the next.
Until the next scheduled city commission meeting.
Public participation.
I, I did, I stuck to that.
You can't discuss the table.
What's that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All motion carried, okay.
No public participation on that?
No, that was just a motion to table.
That was just a motion.
It'll be back on the agenda at the next meeting and there'll be public participation. Well, it was, there was, the motion was to table it.
May I speak anywhere?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Linda Hayes, still at two six three three eight Humboldt. Taking the, the overall picture about this informational meeting, I'm very hopeful that it's going to be a two-way informational meeting.
Would you expect it to be any other way?
That is, that people will talk about their feelings about what they understand, react to the things you tell them that they might not understand and go back and forth. And so I want to reject, address Amy's concerns because the, the size of the available place for the meeting is an issue. And I'm wondering if it might not be significant enough so that perhaps you have two alternative possibilities. So that people can tell you how they feel or think and you can tell them what you're thinking. And that it won't be, I mean, I think it's a significant issue, my, my understanding, I can wait.
Well, the objective will be to accommodate, accommodate as many people as we can, that, that's for sure. I mean, and we, there's no place in Huntington Woods, there's no place even close by, except maybe the Silverdome.
No, I was suggesting.
Or you could get six thousand people if they show.
But aren't we a member of the Berkeley Public School System?
Wait, I'm talking.
How big is the auditorium?
Just wait a minute, I'd like to finish what I was saying, please.
Please do.
I was simply suggesting that we might offer two different evenings. I think that from my understanding at the auction and elsewhere, there's obviously a lot of feeling, accurate or inaccurate. And there's no better way to convert whatever is inaccurate to accuracy than by having information. And I, so I, all I'm suggesting is that size is a factor. And I think that it might be that idea they have two opportunities, that's all, nothing, nothing else.
But we, we heard what you said, we'll see what we can do about that.
Thank you.
Alright, that goes to reports and minutes. First item is the treasurer's report, anyone have any questions or comments for the treasurer? Hearing none, how about the advisory task force minutes, the library advisory board minutes, the senior advisory board minutes and the community advisory committee minutes? Are there any questions or comments at any of these?
Yes.
Yes.
In regard to the library, the gift account is very small. If you want to donate to the library, please call the library, they accept money. We're on limited budgets across the city and they buy material, they've redone the downstairs because they had flooding like most other people. And I'm sure that they will welcome funds donated.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, reports are received and filed.
Can I make a comment on the water?
There's a pub time for public participation and that's now, about something that's not been discussed already, you have something new to bring up?
It was on, I believe, part of this agenda, the exception of the budget and the discussion about the water situation. Whenever you'd like me to address that.
The, the water situ, situation.
Yes, water usage or effect on the budget and the circular trap we're in for a city that is about to approve, apparently, recommendation to you to average costs. The over, executive overview in your own document is this, since pre-recession, given the ongoing Detroit rate hikes, the water bills are going up and up and up astronomically. They have not recovered post-recession, and you can argue whether we're in a post-recession or not. The proposal is now to then tax people more for using less. So you're in, I submit, a debt spiral, which is the more you charge, the less that's going to be used. I would just bring to the commissioner's attention two points. One, we're built on three aquifers and you won't allow residents to drill wells. Two, we really need to be looking, I submit, long-term, at do we want a different water supplier or can we do it ourselves? And I have no idea about the feasibility of that. But the current situation is clearly untenable, has been untenable for decades. And we need to take a close look at our options, that's all I have to say. It is buried in there and it is of concern and as Commissioner Jenks points out, we're all on limited budgets. But when you get into a situation where you're going to tax more for less, that is, shall we say, a political problem and it's certainly, in my opinion, a fiscal problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's something to look at, for sure. Any other comments?
Allison Iverson, two six zero six three Dundee. I'll be brief, I just wanted to mention a couple of things when we're doing, looking down the line, addressing the citizens about what it might mean for historic district study and committee. That we also mentioned some things that maybe they aren't aware of, things like the certified local government. I was reading about that and I understand that there are some requirements that the city must adhere to in order to be considered a certified local government and that there's grant money involved. And that could be very important for people to understand why, maybe that's why, one of the reasons you want this and how that affects our neighborhood. And second, just the things that, the things that we're reading, that I'm reading about the ordinance and just things such as how the ordinance cannot limit review to a specific, a specified portion of a resource such as a front facade or portions visible from the right of, right of way. You know, it basically leaves the door open for future intrusion into, I mean, they, you cannot say that a historic district committee cannot look into your home. They cannot address the concerns of your property inside, it just, I mean, it specifically says here that they can't do that. So those are the areas that I think the residents are most concerned, not about, you know, the nice things that we might find in the study, but what long-term effects might be the case for the residents, so, thank you.
It's a complicated process, that's for sure.
Sure.
It is, yeah. And pretty, very well regulated. Okay, others? Yes, sir.
David Sloan, eighty fifty Lincoln Drive, Huntington Woods, first moved into Huntington Woods in nineteen fifty-nine. Commissioners, mayor, the city of Huntington Woods only challenges the opinions of those who are against a historic district expansion. The cross-examination and demand for evidence only has applied if you disagree with the historic district. There are three examples of inaccurate information given by the commission at recent meetings which went unchallenged. One commissioner stated that Pleasant Ridge is a historic district and that their property values are higher than ours. This is not true. Our values are ten dollars per square foot higher and their district is not restrictive at all as ours is. It is only set up to give residents information on historic home detail. The commissioner was wrong, but no one challenged the two errors. One commissioner also said, we would be in good company with Birmingham since they have a district. Well, their districts are individual historic homes built in the eighteen hundreds with adjacent properties, not homes in the fifty-year-old category. We need to compare apples with apples. No one questioned that statement either. So if you don't believe me, I suggest watching yourselves on the last two commission meetings and judge for yourselves, how fair are you being to the residents who have a different opinion?
Thank you. And I suppose to disagree with you would not be appropriate, so I just, I, the best thing to do is to not take it, take it under consideration and say-
You just agree with a smile, and that's-
Yeah, right, okay. Well, complicated subjects bring out lots of complications, and that's what we're going through, and, and uh, I don't think anybody felt that this would just be a turn of a switch and a simple thing, because it is controversial, so. That's why you have to study it very carefully. Okay. I guess that takes us to the city manager's report.
Sure, I just have a couple of things, um, I would encourage you to uh, let Tony know if you have any questions when you're going over the budget, so we can be prepared to answer those on the twenty-first. Also, the road commission meets with the city uh, every two years, we're meeting with them on Monday, so if there's any concerns you have with the uh, eleven, uh, just ten-mile road service driver that the road-
Well, typically ten mile, yes. When, when does that meet, they're, they're coming here to talk to us during the week sometime?
Yeah, Monday at ten, actually, it'll be at the Pleasant Ridge City Hall, if you, if you'd like to attend.
Which, what day?
Monday, this Monday, at ten. And then, uh, this is severe weather month uh, in Oakland County, so they're gonna be doing a tornado test siren Wednesday, April the fifteenth at one o'clock, so when you hear the siren go off, and it's not Saturday, if it's Wednesday the fifteenth, it's just a, a test.
It is a test, okay.
Monday is the thirteenth, so we're looking, it's not at ten. At ten, okay.
I'm sorry, it's the thirteenth at ten.
Thank you.
It's Monday, okay.
And the tornado siren is the fifteenth at one.
There you go.
And that's it.
We'll post that on our website.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and you want to have any questions for the city manager? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to commissioners' remarks, and I think we'll start with Commissioner Jenks tonight.
On the fourth, fifth of November, there are two millages that will be up, or that will be proposed. Uh, there is a proposal uh, to improve the schools of, of the Berkeley School District.
Commissioner, I think that, if I were, we're not mistaken, I think that those votes are May fifth, not, not in November. You said November, and I said, boy, now, that's, things are happening fast.
I was trying to mislead people. Thank you for your help.
I started writing down November, and I said, what is it, May fifth?
Uh, May fifth, um, there's a fifty-eight, uh, fifty-nine million dollar bond issue. It is for building improvement. A lot of people can't figure out uh, what's a bond, what's a millage, what's his tax rate. Uh, close to four point nine million dollars in improvements. If that millage passes from the, uh, from the Berkeley School District, close to four point nine million dollars in improvements will occur to the Berkeley, to the Burton School. One of the things I look at when there's a millage is what's the impact? One, out of my pocket, and two, what's the long-term benefit from it? Uh, the long-term benefit is, is that uh, I saw again today that we were listed as one of the fourth top community in the state, our neighbor was tenth. But, one of the reasons was the performance of the Burton Schools. So, uh, it may be very, very valuable when you get, uh, when you get a property tax bill, if you can't afford it, and a lot of people have said, "Look, my taxes are going up, I can't afford it." Uh, Mr. Lehman, what is the procedure for uh, asking for a hardship reduction?
Well, there are very definite specifications as to what construes a hardship under the state act. We do have the information available here. If anyone is in a position where they cannot afford to pay their tax bill, there are options available.
And, and that, that's the first one, the, the second thing is there's a state sales tax increase. And again, the question is, what's that for, and what's in it for me? Uh, the sales tax increase at the state level will deal with people, roads, and increased revenue sharing coming in. As it relates to people, what will be occurring is for every student in the Berkeley School System, the allocation will go up by two hundred dollars. Berkeley has forty-eight hundred students, that's nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars that will accrue to the Berkeley School System, close to a million dollars in additional funds, in the student aid fund. As it relates to roads, um, our road funding that comes to us, it's currently a little bit under three hundred and seventy-one thousand, by two thousand seventeen, that would go up to six hundred and fifteen, almost six hundred and sixteen uh, thousand dollars. We pay roughly one point five million dollars a year to replace our roads in a long-term program. Right now, the funding that we're drawing from the state program funds about twenty-five percent of that cost. If this, uh, if the sales tax goes up, uh, what it will do is it will allow us to draw virtually forty percent of our funds uh, from the road funds that we get. Uh, and the last thing is, uh, the state has in many ways funded its operations by taking away from statutory revenue sharing. Although there's revenue sharing, it's divided into two parts. In the constitution, they can't, the legislature and the governor under either party can't mess with it. On the statutory, we've been getting less and less, we have lost about a million dollars over the last eight years, because the funding that would have come to us by full formula has not occurred. Uh, there is an increase in constitutional revenue sharing that will occur uh, if this sales tax goes up. I just want you to be aware that the school district is buildings. None of the money from the school district uh, proposal can be used for people. The sales tax will benefit the schools, a hundred dollars a head. That is going to be used for salaries, for pupil programming, and also to reduce the pension liability. So, they're two different programs. I voted yes for both of them, uh, what you do obviously is up to you. Be safe, uh, it gets dark still early. Children and adults believe that they own the streets, and they run with their back to the cars, assuming that people will see them. If you go to the public safety department, they will give you material, at least that's reflective. If you ride a bike, put a light on the front, and a light on the back, and a reflector on the back. It's very, very scary, and for people that ride around with, where Mr. Zeno lives, where is one of the bike routes, among other things, uh, it's a threat to cars. Please don't be a threat to cars. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to echo Commissioner Jenks' support of the two ballot issues. Uh, schools are, are an excellent school system, we're lucky to have them here in our neighborhood, uh, and they do, they do need continued investment to keep them there, and it's important for our community, so I would encourage your support of that. The school, or the sales tax increase, uh, the money going to the, to the roads might not be the, the best formula, might, might not be the, the one we would pick, but it is the option that we have on the table, um, and it, it does solve many of the problems we're facing in the communities today, so I would support that. Encourage you to look at it closely and, and support it. I would like to thank the entire community for their overwhelming support of the men's club auction. Uh, we raised gross close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had a lot of participation, not only in people there that evening, but in gifts that were donated by many members of the community, as well as advertising. And uh, it was a, a great night, we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also wanna congratulate the, and thank the uh, men's club for the incredible uh, auction, and for their uh, confidence and contributions to our city. I, I know of no other city that has the benefits of an organization as philanthropic and as dedicated as the Huntington Woods Men's Club, and uh, the amount of money over the years has been phenomenal, and the auction on the twentieth was a terrific, terrific time, so I thank them and express my appreciation. Uh, the millage is always uh, high on the list of not just supporting the schools, but supporting our city. I always tell people I only have three issues as a city commissioner, property values, property values, and property values. And as soon as somebody can show me how I'm wrong, I'll listen, but I believe that the millage and the strong support of the Berkeley Public Schools is critical to maintaining uh, the value of the homes in Huntington Woods. And uh, obviously, the goal is to support the schools for the benefit of the future, namely, our children and grandchildren, uh, and then secondarily, the benefit that that has for all of us in terms of homeowners in this wonderful community. The third thing I want to address just briefly is, for the past several months, uh, besides historic issues, uh, we've had this noise ordinance, uh, and the zoo, and some other issues. And I hope at the May meeting, uh, Ms. Razadi has done a great deal of work on a proposed ordinance that I've been trying to work with her on, she knows far more than I do about the nuanced issues. Uh, it's a very thorny issue, regulating noise, uh, or attempting to regulate noise, is very, very thorny. It's a little bit like regulating speech, you have to be very, very careful. So I want to be sure that, and I hope that in May, we're gonna be able to pass an ordinance that will deal with the noise issue, I know that's a great concern to the people who live by the zoo, but just so the whole city knows, it isn't just the people who live by the zoo that are gonna be affected or benefited by this ordinance, it's going to affect everyone. And it does set certain decibel levels, and uh, you know, it's, as I said, it's a little thorny. So obviously, people who are concerned about the noise levels at the zoo will say, "Oh, that's about time," and other people are gonna say, "What, what are you doing?" In case we weren't mad at you already, now we're really mad, but I am hopeful that uh, that an ordinance will be available for uh, discussion, and I, uh, am hopeful passage at the next meeting, that it is, it is a very time-consuming endeavor, and I, I wanna thank Carol for the work that she's done, that she's, she got a very good handle on it, and one thing is, that's important, is we don't wanna pass an ordinance that, if, for example, if the zoo took a look at it and said, "That's terrific," and called up their law firm and said, "Here, tell the city of Huntington Woods what they can do with their ordinance," the last thing I wanna do is be involved in costly litigation, trying to defend an ordinance against uh, some sort of constitutional uh, attack by, you know, the zoo or, or anyone else. So, I wanna be sure that we get it as right as we possibly can, and hopefully, that'll be available for discussion in May. Thank you very much, nothing else.
Okay.
Thanks.
Oh, just a little things, um, at the last meeting, um, Linda Solomon was concerned about the exterior of the perimeter, and I asked City Manager Sullivan if we could get a meeting with the um, zoo um, committee, and look at this, and discuss, and really um, look at their master plan. I also asked, because I'm not sure, I'm not a, not a planner, if um, they're subject to, because it's not the city, it's the um, conservatory that is taking over the Detroit Zoo right now, if, if they have to follow the planning because they're in Huntington Woods. The zoo is actually part of the zoo, the, the entrance part is in Huntington Woods. So when they do anything, are we notified like around here with three hundred feet and that? So those are, some of those things to bring up, and that electric tram has me a little concerned. I, you know, I just wanna make sure, because the last thing I wanna see when we walk down Huntington Woods, and it's a twenty-seven people tram, I don't care if it's electric or not electric, coming around the perimeter of where we used to be able to see vegetation and animals coming around that very peaceful, peaceful walk. And the other thing that I wanted to talk about is that sometimes we don't talk about all the good things, that we were one of eighteen cities that had a super fiscal uh, rating, and, and as Commissioner Jenks alluded to, that the um, newspaper that was actually pretty cool came out, and Cities and Lifestyle came out, and we were number four, and what they, uh, best cities to be, that, to raise a family. And it said, "The suburban Detroit city may have the highest median income in the state, and expensive housing, but the cost of living pay dividends for young families. Huntington Woods has an excellent elementary school, which received the great school rating of nine out of ten, and eighty percent of its residents, uh, twenty-five and older have at least a bachelor degree, more than triple that statewide rate. Residents have a long-term investment in Huntington Woods with home ownership rate ninety-four point five percent, which is twenty percent higher than the statewide figure." That is impressive, and those are statistics that Mr. Sloan, please check, and make sure if they are not correct, bring those to the next meeting, because I really wanna make sure that we're correct.
Thank you, I saw that.
So, um, but anyway, that's why people wants, they stay in their homes, and they wanna stay in Huntington Woods, and they wanna grow old here, so those are why we bring up things such as um, senior housing and things. You know, I went to the senior advisory committee, and it was an excellent committee, and they brought up, we have a needs assessment that, take a look at that if you're interested, it was very informational, and we'll be talking about these. These are things that, as a city, um, there is so much going on for our little community, because we touch every other community. We are the Woodward Corridor and the six ninety-six, so um, it is a great location as far as, you know, professionals living in our city, and the fact that you can walk to an elementary school or ride your bike. And by the way, the only thing that Commissioner Jenks forgets is wear a helmet, please, because if by chance you get hit, and you got a prayer of a chance of wearing a helmet, you know, my husband was hit, he had fifty-two cracks in that helmet, but he's alive today and walking, and talking about it. So wear your helmet, most important, reflective gear, important. It is a friendly community, um, people get together, we all don't agree, and, and I think that that makes for good dialogue. And I think that if it takes two meetings, if it takes three meetings, I think the community should be involved and have good information, uh, factual information on historic districts. How is our historic district doing that we already have? And um, you know, and have the professionals come and speak, because we're, we brought that up because residents had a concern of, of entering into neighborhood, and I don't know if, for me, as a kid going back into my neighborhood, when you don't recognize your neighborhood, that's sort of sad, I mean, you can come into Huntington Woods, and there's some key homes that just are, the entrance is so beautiful in all different areas, and have history to them. So, whether we do it or not, I just wanna make sure we have an informed kind of factual hearing, and that everybody gets a chance in the um, the selection. So that's why, um, the paper sort of said it wrong, and I called them, and they, they said that I um, opposed the informational meeting, I didn't oppose it, I wanted it for all the residents, not for just the residents in the district. And they said they'll make sure they correct that, but as of yet, they haven't corrected it. But it makes a big difference when you say, "She doesn't want," no, 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 I wanted a bigger meeting for everybody. And even when we did the rec center, we did divisioning, the information, when you make changes, I'm all for, you know, letting, I, I've never seen a sellout on a, on a city issue. But I would be thrilled, I don't think anybody in, in all the years I've been here- I've been here, 6,000 people, we'd be lucky if we probably got 200, 300. We, we probably get down on our knees, and thank God that that many people decided to come to the historic informational sessions. The other thing that I wanted to say is that you'll see a pesticide-free sign on my lawn, because, um, and right now Denise Rogers has those. And we had a pesticide task force, I think they disbanded. We're gonna, and I tried to talk to Claire about ensuring education for, um, we just want to make sure we don't see weeds, and we want to spray. But when you spray, you not only take chemicals into your neighbors' yards, but they get the chemicals that they don't want. And so, talk to your neighbors, you know, if you're gonna do anything, do it by a sprouter. There are organic ways to take care of weeds, and there's always alternative than to chemicals. And I'm a big person, big advocate of, I'm also a big person, but of no spraying. And I think that people have to understand that those chemicals, in the long term, affect us. And so with that said, have a great spring, and go Tigers, huh? That was a good opener, so.
Okay, in order to avoid too much sensory overload, I'm gonna pass for tonight. Too much information overload already. Good, thank you all. So with that, I believe everything, we will adjourn the regular commission meeting, which means the meeting right now is done. We will have a closed meeting, and we have to vacate the room. Thank you for coming.